Good evening and welcome to the sixth meeting of fiscal year 2023 for the Milton Planning Board. At this time, I would like to call the meeting to order. And if the members, if we could introduce ourselves and our staff. I'd like to first introduce Sean.
Sean Feige, member.
Rich?
Rich Mueller, member.
Maggie's not here, myself, Meredith Hall, Chair of the Planning Board, and our staff, Julia.
Julia Getman, clerk.
And Josh.
Josh Lee, Assistant Town Planner.
Thank you so much.
And Cheryl.
And Cheryl, I'm sorry, Cheryl?
Cheryl Taggias, member.
Great. Okay. Sorry.
Julia, are you able to?
Maggie's trying to get in, sorry.
Yeah.
So we'll give her just another minute, but watch for Maggie trying to get in. So are you asking Julia a question? Cheryl?
Sorry, it was just to see if she could promote Maggie.
Great, yes. She was having a little difficulty. So while Maggie's trying to get in, we can go over some administrative items. Our next meeting dates are scheduled for September 22nd and October 13th. If everybody can mark their calendars for that. There's also a few dates which I'll put out later that the Select Board is wondering if we can also meet. And we'll discuss that just a little bit later on the agenda. Next is the approval of our minutes. And I don't know if folks had a chance to look. Cheryl, I know you did edits for August 11th and the 24th. And there was one other set, but I didn't see edits on those. Do you?
Sorry, I looked in the folder and those were the two sets of minutes that were in the folder. As of Tuesday, was something added to the folder that I didn't?
There was a third, I didn't print it out, but it might have been old, it might have been an older set of minutes. So I think for tonight, we can just vote on if people have read them, August 11th and August 24th.
Yeah, the ones from the last meeting were added yesterday.
That's what I saw, okay.
Okay, sorry, I haven't looked since Tuesday on those, so I didn't look at those yet.
That's great, that's no problem. Figured you had. Welcome, Maggie. So I don't know, are there any comments on either the, either the August 11th minutes or August 24th?
I just had, I had a comment on August 11th. The, the, we had a discussion in regard to the MBTA Communities Act. And part of the discussion is not captured in the minutes. It was a component of the discussion that we asked, and I specifically asked Tim to present at a future meeting. The grant monies that the town has received that he started, that he mentioned in that meeting over the previous 10 years. So I do think that's a very important matter, and it's not recorded in the minutes. So that was my only comment in regards to those meeting, in regards to that set of meeting minutes. I just think it's relevant to capture that. And in regards to the 24th and 25th, I reviewed both of those meeting minutes. And I have no, I have no comments on them, they're fine with me.
Sean, do you want to either make the edit, the proposed edit in the document itself? Or did you want to do it tonight and try and vote that tonight?
Sure, I'm happy to do it tonight, I, yeah, gladly. If, I, just a simple statement that we could add to it. That, you know, Tim would, at a, at a upcoming meeting. Articulate the grant monies that the town has received over the past 10 years, which is what he talked about in that meeting. That's essentially it.
So Julia, do you have the ability to do a, bring that document up and do a screen share and add that sentence? Or would you like me to do it?
I am on my personal Mac, so I'm not, I don't have my work computer, I'm sorry.
Okay.
I can send them around tomorrow, I mean, make the edits tomorrow and send them back around unless, but if you wanna. I don't know if you can okay them that way or not. Oh, there we go, thanks, Tim. I mean, thanks, Josh.
Alright, so Josh, if you can go, I think it was under the staff update there.
Yes, the first one, Josh.
And maybe at the end of that paragraph.
It's, it's further up.
Gotta go back up, right.
Yeah. So where it reads townwide repercussions. Or Josh, if we could add a note that would read, Tim. At an upcoming Planning Board meeting. Will present. The. Historical grant monies. That have been received. I think that's sufficient.
Alright.
Thank you.
Thanks, Josh, so. Then. We have the 11th and the 24th.
Fourth.
Right? Alright, so you want to take a motion?
Yes, please.
Now, I'm going to approve the meeting minutes as amended of August 11th and August 24th.
Great, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, roll call. Maggie?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Cheryl?
Yes.
And Sean?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Thank you all.
But are we capturing, there were three sets of minutes there. It was the 24th and the 25th, the 24th, of course, was dedicated to the.
Correct. The 25th was the one that Cheryl just hasn't had a chance to look over for edit.
No problem, I, I'm sorry.
That just came in yesterday, so we were just, we'll vote those at our next meeting.
Sure, I apologize if I missed.
That's right. No problem. So now we, Josh, I don't know if you have a staff update, Tim may be coming in a little bit late, he's not here. He had another hearing tonight to go to, so did he provide an update, Josh? Or is that something we'd like to defer to later in the meeting?
Yes, as you say, Tim, Tim is doing double duty with the ZBA this evening. He did not have any items that he wanted to share at this moment as part of the staff update. Though it's relevant to a later article related to the zoning recodification. But as was shared earlier, staff, Joe Prandak, our Building Commissioner, and Sue Galvin, who both had thoughts on the recodification, were, will not be able to join us this evening.
Yes, and so I did want to actually jump ahead with this because we do have Peter Mullen, who is here this evening, and Alex Whiteside. And I just was gonna ask the board, because Sue is not here and Joe can't make it. Is this something that we would like to move to our meeting on the 22nd, so all can be in attendance? I don't know how the board feels about that, I'm. We were sort of, yeah.
If I may, I think that's a good idea. We did receive a letter from Joe Prandak and Sue Galvin jointly signed by them. And so I do think it's important to have all the parties who've been involved in this sort of in the same room. Even if it's a Zoom room, so we can hear each other and they can hear each other. And, you know, I did join Meredith last night in attending the Bylaw Review Committee's meeting. And I read through the documents that are in the folder and I had a conversation with Tim about it. I feel like I am pretty up to speed on it, but I feel as if it's complicated. And we really should have all the parties at the same conversation instead of separate conversations.
Yeah, Cheryl, I agree with you, I've gone through what Tim had sent out and I have questions, but it doesn't make sense to ask the questions until everybody's present, I'm in favor of the 22nd also.
Right, is everyone else in agreement, Rich and Maggie? So thank you very much, because we were prepared to talk about this. And Alex and Peter Mullen have done a tremendous amount of work on this. And I think we're just sort of finalizing our next steps. And we should have, you know, full information to be presented by Alex and Peter. And the discussion will be, will be probably better at that time. So great, so thank you again, Peter and Alex, for having come to the meeting tonight. But we will defer that to the, to the 22nd. So. Thank you so much. So moving along on our agenda. We have the 34 Milton Hill Road Approval Not Required Plan, and I do see.
Meredith?
Yes?
Could I mention what I think is a creative item?
Yes.
It's not, it's not on your, it's not on your agenda, but I find it to be within the context of administrative.
Yes.
And this is really a, you know, a comment for all and certainly for the members. And I wish Tim was present for it, but that's okay, we can catch on, catch up on it another time. Essentially, my, my thoughts are, and I'm, you know, I am new to the Planning Board. And there are many, many years of experience greater than mine since I've been on the board recently. But I, I feel like as a board, we have an obligation to the residents of the town to contain the time of the Planning Board meeting to a period of time that's realistic for a resident to be able to participate in. And, you know, the last planning board meeting we had ended at 11:30, it was four and a half hours prior. And I don't have the exact times of the prior ones, but we seem to have three hours, greater than three hours. I think a resident shouldn't need to have a three-hour stamina to be able to participate or listen to the entire Planning Board meeting. So my, my. I guess my thoughts are, as a, as a board, I think a meeting time, two hours or potentially two and a half hours is probably much more appropriate. And I also feel like for all of us, and also anyone in the town that's participating. Once we reach the start time of seven o'clock and, you know, we're, we're participating in a meeting from seven to nine on Thursday night, and even past nine. I don't, I will speak for myself, it's not, I am not, you know, at my best in terms of the day. Certainly when we get to 11 o'clock, I generally rise every day at five, and you guys probably do too. So I guess I'm proposing as a board that we strive to make a commitment to contain our meeting to something that's in nature of, it was a two and a half hours. That requires that we create some discipline, either to have a reasonable agenda or to, you know, manage our discussion, so we just make our point and move on. I think it would be better for the residents and probably for the board.
Thank you, Sean, and I see Rich's, and I agree with everything you said. And Rich, I know you would like to comment as well.
Yeah, no, I really appreciate that, Sean, I 100% agree. I know most folks weren't on at this time, but the year I started, there was, I forget who the chair was, maybe it was Brian Furz. If it was you, Sean, I don't remember, sorry. But we had this, and Julie would probably remember, we had this like, it was 10 o'clock, that was the end of the meeting. And if we were leading up to it, we really looked at the agenda and we're very thoughtful on it. And yeah, I mean, I know many, many boards seem to, I've been on many of the board meetings, from work to me to this, that go almost. I remember stopping meetings because we weren't allowed to go past 12 o'clock. And that, nobody, I'm drunk at that time, and so I'm a huge proponent, I would advocate for like smaller agendas so that we can still have robust conversations. You know, things something like that, but huge, totally agree.
Rich, that was Alex that did that, and he made it so that a vote would have to be taken at 10 o'clock to keep going.
That was right, a vote had to be taken, I love that.
That's great. And I, I, you know, I completely agree, and I think you'll see after the last meeting. You know, this, this agenda is, is, is much shorter. So we, I think that it has a significant, you know, or we just also, you know, when we get to a certain time, we can move to a following meeting.
Yeah, and I'm not, I'm not, I, my point isn't that this is necessarily a chairperson. You know, we're all members of the board, and it's not necessarily always the agenda that we have. I happen to look at other agendas of other boards in town, and I am stunned by how many items are on their agendas. I just don't know how long their meetings last, or how they could actually sufficiently discuss the topics. And we don't have such a lengthy agenda, but I also think we have a responsibility to probably be disciplined in terms of how much, how much discussion we have. And certainly there are things that warrant a lot of discussion, and I don't wanna limit that. If there's an opportunity to, you know, and me included, to say it once and make my point and move on, I don't have to do that. So anyhow, I just, I don't, I don't, I know there was another chairperson before you, and prior to the previous chairperson, there was another chairperson, and I don't think that's really a chairperson's. You know, it's not, it's not fault of a chairperson, it's, we're a board, and we all can, can I think, contribute to containing the meetings for a long time.
Great, thank you. And I don't know if it was Cheryl or Maggie, but both of you have your hands up, so.
Cheryl can go, that's fine.
Okay, having been chairperson twice, a couple of things of observations that I might make and suggestion is if we can be clear about whether there's an action that we're planning to take on an agenda item this evening. And if not, if it's for discussion, maybe we can say we're going to allot a certain amount of time for discussion and then move the rest of it to the next meeting. So that's one suggestion. Another suggestion I have is when we have something that generates a lot of public interest is that we, we put a limit on how much time the public is given to speak and how many times they can speak. I know it's a hard thing because of members want, I feel it's important to hear from members of the public. But on the other hand, we also need time for the board members to have discussion in order to make decisions. So just a couple of suggestions, and I think Meredith, you know, when you and Tim set the agenda, you know, maybe he can help with some of what, you know, what we're, what he expects we need to take a vote on when. Because he knows best when, what things have statutory requirements of action. You know, certain things have, we have to take action on a certain amount of time, and other things we don't. So if he can advise you, so you can advise us at the outset, that these things absolutely have to get done tonight versus, you know, being able to be deferred, I think that would be helpful for you.
Great point, yeah, thank you. And Maggie?
And the other thing which I think might be helpful is if we sort of stick to some type of process where if something is on the agenda, then it has to be submitted by the week before. I know just my schedule personally, and as soon as Tuesday comes, I don't have time to be checking my town in Milton email to see what last-minute things have come in. I kind of do my prep work, you know, over the weekend and on Monday. And I feel like maybe we waste some time because we're trying to like read what was submitted yesterday or the day before. And I know it's hard to do, and, you know, I've been in the applicant's position before, and I know you're waiting on all different professionals. But we all have jobs and families, and if, if something doesn't get into our folder by Thursday night, then I just don't think it should be expected of us to actually make a really good decision on it.
Good point, good point. Okay.
Can I just say one thing to Maggie, sorry, I've done work in other jurisdictions, and they absolutely will not put something on the agenda if the materials aren't submitted one week in advance. So if applicants are absolute, you know, know, if they are made well aware of that absolute timeframe, then I think they'll become disciplined to meet it.
And I've been asking for Tim, yeah, to do that, and it's been better, but it could even be, I think, even earlier if possible, so, great.
Well, you know, I guess a closing comment on it, I think all great suggestions. And maybe what we could do at some point is just create some, some protocol that we intend to follow. You know, just, just a handful of things with, I think everybody has pitched in here and made a comment. And there might be a half a dozen things that if we follow, we'll be able to have a meeting where, you know, we have the, we have the information timely and we're, we're more productive in the meeting. And we're probably serving the residents better. I really feel like we should be able to get through a meeting. I meant what I said earlier, two hours, two and a half hours is probably, should be reasonable. And, and, you know, a resident that wants to be a regular attendee at the Planning Board meeting, I don't think we should force them to have to pay attention for much longer than that. And we're gonna have the, we're gonna have the anomaly meeting where there's something really important and we have to get into it, and it takes us a little bit longer, but as a rule of thumb, I feel like we can accomplish this.
Agreed, I agree, yeah. Good, so we'll have a check-in time, I think tonight is gonna be an early night, as I mentioned. But, but I like, I really do like the, you know, limiting conversation and a check-in time at 9:30 to see and what needs to be voted on early, those are many excellent points. Okay, so with that, if there's not anything else, we actually, before we do 34 Milton Hill Road, we have our citizens speak. If there is anyone here who would like to raise their hand and speak to anything that is on the agenda or not on the agenda, please feel free to raise your hand. I am not seeing anyone at this time for citizens speak. So with that, we can move to 34 Milton Hill Road Approval Not Required Plan. And I do see J.D. Wild is here, Jim DeSalle. If anyone else wants to come in. But please raise your hand if you would be, like to be let in. Tom, I know Jim DeSalle and J.D. Wild, okay. We can move them in as panelists, please. Believe they are in.
Yes, I'm here, how you doing tonight, Meredith?
Good, welcome.
Welcome, thank you for having me, I appreciate it.
Good, good to have you.
Thank you, I'll jump right into it. So my name is Joshua Wild, I'm here tonight for 34 Milton Hill Road. I'm joined by my engineer, Jim DeSalle. Both Jim and I came before this board approximately a month ago and received an approval for a two-lot subdivision at 34 Milton Hill Road. And we're here tonight proposing an A&R for a non-buildable piece of land that connects from Joseph Grogan, the adjacent neighbor's house, down to the dock. The reason that we are proposing this A&R is that, once we receive the approval, both Mr. Grogan and I have been in pretty lengthy conversations about what's the, the most direct path to get the dock underway. And one of the constraints that we keep running into is that, myself, I do not have a boat and I have young children, it's certainly something that I'm excited about with the property, but it wasn't on the top of my priority list. Our concern is, is that we believe it's gonna be harder as time goes on to get the approvals and to perform the work, especially with the Napa River cleanup and kind of everything going on down there. So we think time is of the essence, and it's such an amazing asset to that property. It's really part of kind of the bigger vision for activating that entire site and bringing it to life. So Mr. Grogan and I threw a few different scenarios around, and we landed on this as the most viable path to get it going underway. So what we're proposing is that the, what was Lot 2, the larger parcel of land that I am building a house on for my family, we're proposing to make a 2A and a 2B lot. And if you'd like, Meredith, I can share my screen and go over it.
Yes, please, thank you.
Can you see my screen?
Yes.
Okay, so what we've done is we've, we've, we've taken what was entirely Lot 2 and created a Lot 2A and a Lot 2B. Again, just to stress that this is a non-buildable piece of land. It's gonna extend from Joseph Grogan's piece of property right now on 94th Road down, and it's, it cuts off right at the edge of the dock. So what we've done is we've cut out a piece of land that provides him the access that he needs to go down there and perform the work. And again, the reason we've done this is that we believe that this is the fastest path to get the project underway, to build the dock as the Chapter 91 license allows. And, you know, it's a long, lengthy process that we want to get going on right away, but financially, I'm not in a position to do so with the larger project that I'll be working on up the hill. And it's just not the highest priority for me. So that's, that's the reasoning behind why we're before this board tonight for this A&R. So I'm happy to answer any questions, and I think if there's anything technical, Jim is also here as well and be happy to answer any of those.
I'll let the board, Cheryl, I see your hand up.
Yes, sometimes we get a staff report. And I should have mentioned this in our prior conversation, but, you know, oftentimes it's helpful to start with it. But the, Jim, with your experience, Jim DeSalle, the subdivision wouldn't in any way impact Lot 2A's conformance, I understand, right? And then as far as the non-buildable, that being incorporated into a different parcel is not really a part of this, our consideration with this, is that right?
Yeah, what, Tim reviewed it, and before we even filed the subdivision, just to go over the completeness of it. And he sent it back, he said, yeah, we're good. Lot 2A is still a buildable lot, we haven't, we have the lot area with so on and so forth to build. And Lot 2B, you'll notice it says not a buildable lot in parentheses, and there's also a note saying it's also gonna be combined with other land of Grogan. So under the A&R subdivision or division requirement, this meets the requirement. And visually, you won't see any difference in either way, it's, it's literally gonna be, it's gonna look like it's all one big lot. Besides that, we meet all the requirements.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, sorry.
Yes, Tim had. Yes, Tim had, did tell me that he reviewed it and it, everything seemed to be in perfect order. Any other questions from the board? Does the board feel ready to take a vote on this approval?
Oh, yeah.
Cheryl?
I'm fine with it. I think the motion would be that the board authorizes the director of planning and community development to endorse this plan is not requiring subdivision approval.
Is there a second to that? Second, that was, okay. All right, all in favor. Sean?
Yes.
Cheryl?
Yes.
Maggie?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Okay. Thank you very much for coming tonight.
Thank you. We appreciate your time. Thank you.
Great. Good luck with the project. Okay. All right. So the next item on our discussion was the discussion of the recodification, which we are moving to the twenty-second. So we will have that discussion, which I think will be better at that time. So the next item is old business and rather than, before going right into any goals and objectives, I'd actually like to, I know we have the folks here from one ninety-three Central and I thought we could give them the courtesy of going ahead so they don't have to sit on and listen to us much longer, so more than they need to. So with that, let's see. Sunny is here. Marion is, McCetrick is here. If we can move them in as panelists now. Okay. Leave are they in?
Yes, I'm in, Meredith. Thank you. Good evening to all the board members.
Good evening.
And thank you for moving us up and accommodating. I appreciate that. Maybe I'll quickly summarize and Marion can add comments. So after the great feedback last time from the panel, we did go back to the arborist and wanted to share an update with a discussion. So he's actually agreed to planting the larger trees as recommended by the panel. The only challenge or slight change is originally the plan was to plant the hornbeams. Unfortunately, he's unable to source them till next spring. So what he's promoting right now, or at least proposing, instead of that, planting three black tupelo trees, larger caliper and taller in size. So the old ones, if you recall, they were eight to ten feet and I think two or two and a half inch. He's going to source three or three and a half inch and up to fifteen feet tall, three of them in the back. And in the front, I think there was feedback and concern about the previous tree, which was going to be planted, which was service berry. And based on the feedback from the board in the front, he'll be planting the Princeton, I believe elm or century tree, which will do a kind of a canopy and shade providing in the front. So those are the updates and changes from the discussion and feedback from the, the board members last time. And a quick summary of what is the current proposal for planting the new trees. Maybe I'll stop and see if Marion wants to add something. If not, maybe if the board has comments or questions, I'll be happy to answer those.
I, I just wanted to clarify slightly. It is the elm. It's the Princeton elm, which you've agreed to.
That's correct. I believe. So it was Princeton elm. For some reason, I'm not technical with the trees, so I'm not an expert. Because I've seen Princeton elm previously, but in the summary that I got from Todd, it says century. So I don't know if it's the same thing or it's a different thing, but yes, Princeton elm is what is my recollection.
Yes, the century is different. I think that was just a typo, a mistake on the first plan and then he sends the new revised.
Okay, perfect. So that is Princeton. That's what I thought. That's what it was. Yes. Thank you.
Great.
Marion, do you have anything additional to add?
That's a complete summary of the changes. I did want to emphasize that the century was just a typo. Every correspondence I've seen has said Princeton elm, but then that popped up at the last minute. So I guess we're interested in knowing whether this is a better plan, that whether the board supports it. We're just, I'd rather hear feedback from board members. I don't have anything to add.
Any comments that the board would like to share on these changes?
Yeah.
Good. Yes, Maggie?
Um, so I don't necessarily have any, you know, as I stated first on that the varieties I'm not as particular about. I just wanted to make sure though, because at one of your meetings, you said you needed trees that didn't produce berries and the tupelo can produce berries. So I don't know if you have looked into that or not, or if it's on your accepted list, but I just don't want you to put yourself in a situation where you're going to commit to a tree, then later on down the road, it might not fit your needs. So that's why I'm, I'm comfortable with the tupelo, but I'm comfortable with any tree that's on the shade tree list. As long as it's a three inch caliper and a minimum of fifteen feet in height, then I don't have a problem with varieties.
Thank you, Maggie. I, I was not aware. As I mentioned, I'm not a tree expert. So the only challenge he had with the hornbeams, he said to get the larger trees, he has to wait until spring. So that is one option, obviously, that we plant the trees in the back in the spring. But if you don't have any concerns with the black tupelo, I will confirm if there are any conflicts with Goddard because of the berries, as you pointed out. And if there is maybe giving us some latitude that we can either plant the black tupelo if they don't have an issue, or if they do, then we'll come back to the hornbeams, but they'll be planted in spring rather than right now.
And I'm, I'm comfortable with that. I, I mean, I know that planting, getting plant material is challenging. So if you have to wait to the spring, I'm comfortable with approving that.
Thank you.
Meredith, I'm also, I'm also comfortable with what Maggie just outlined and I, I think just based on my own experience, those trees likely will be planted in the spring just because the damage that could occur during construction, planting them as soon as they'd be planted, you might be better off planting in the spring, but whatever, I don't want to be restrictive in any way. I think you've addressed the concern that we spoke about earlier in terms of the size of the trees, Sunny. So thank you for doing that.
Thank you, Sean. Thank you, Maggie.
Okay. Does everyone else feel comfortable with that?
Yes.
The landscape plan? Okay.
In the spirit of brevity, yes.
Yes. Then a motion to approve the landscape plan is proposed. Would someone like to make that motion?
I think, but what Maggie, I think, said, Meredith, would be to give some flexibility if Sunny found that that tree was not on the Goddard school proof list, that they could change that. Is that right, Maggie?
Yes, yep.
Yes. So is that your motion, Cheryl?
Sure.
And is there a second on that?
Second.
Great. All right. Roll call. Sean?
Yes.
Or Rich?
Yes.
Maggie?
Yes.
Cheryl?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Great.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the feedback and have a great night, folks.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
And I, you know, I do see Peter Mullen still here. I just, I want to give Peter maybe the, an opportunity if he wanted to say something this evening. Peter, can you raise your hand? Oh, he's no longer with us. Okay. I just didn't know if he was waiting to, that he had something he'd wanted to say. So I no longer see him. So he's welcome to if he needs to. So moving along, so we had our discussion of goals and objectives of the planning board and we, we, we kept this on and I'm going to, I don't think we really need to go into this, this evening, but one thing that Tim was going to mention that he had a discussion on doing a land count regarding the forty B and he was, he had told me in our discussion that he now, he didn't think he had funds last year to do a land count. But now that he, now he thinks he, he would be able to do that. So I think that's something that he's going to be moving forward to. We can put that on and have that to be something that we can also achieve this year. Cheryl, you have your hand up?
Yes, Meredith. Did you intend to defer a discussion of priorities to the next meeting? Is that what you meant? Because there is something I wanted to speak to.
Oh, no, that was, I, I just, I deferred that just to, to now, to actually to the discussion because I wanted to let one ninety-three Central have go. And that's what, when the, under the goals and objectives and priorities, that's where Tim was saying we could add that land count to our, to our list of objective, of things that we want to obtain. But he's not here to discuss that. So you, did you have something else to share?
Yes. I know that we talked at our last meeting about having a written list, but I don't recall and I didn't get a chance to go back and listen to the tape. Was the codification on that list of priorities for the board?
I think it was. You know, it might not have been on that list that we discussed. It is definitely a priority for us though. So if it's not on there.
I just wanted to make sure that it is on the list, Meredith.
Absolutely. Yeah.
And, and I just wanted to, we talked about maybe some of us will work on some of these priorities outside of meetings. And I just wanted to let my fellow members know that I would volunteer to work on the codification because I feel so strongly about needing to move it forward. Having worked with it and seen the kind of problems that we have not having this code in a, in a way, in a sort of in a format that, you know, is user friendly, it, it really causes sort of wasted time, if you will, for our, our building department. It also is wasted time for the ZPA. I saw it with the forty B with the list of waivers that applicants have come in with. They, they're working without a date material. So I, I just wanted to put out there that I, I
Will definitely make sure.
Happy to, to work on it, to see this thing get advanced.
Great. And I'll put together with Tim, you know, we'll put it maybe on one of our agendas, just a written out form of all of those items that I discussed with, in, with you all and then with meeting with Arthur, just so we have that sort of running list that we can, you know, check things off and make sure that we're all on the same page.
And, and just, I'm going to reiterate, I think I may have said it then. You know, we, if we backtrack out one to two times that we have town meetings, where we can actually send zoning amendments to town meeting, we actually don't have a lot of time because of the timeframe required for printing, for warrant committee review, for submitting to the select board and so on. So if we have any intention of doing anything for the December town meeting, we only have one more meeting, I think, before that's due. And then if we start to look at when they're going to require articles for the annual town meeting, it will probably be in January. So we don't have a lot of time. I, I don't think we can keep. I mean, I know some things don't require us to work that quickly, but I really would like us very soon to say, this is what we're targeting. You know, we may not hit it, but we're targeting for December. We're targeting for May. Because large zoning articles are not favorably found at the annual town meeting because there's already so much on the agenda. Right? And so we've got to be thinking about the annual, or the fall town meeting of next year, really now. And so I'd like to map out, I'd like to really see a schedule mapped out for us to really be productive.
And that's why this, you know, this next meeting with the bylaw committee is going to be really important and, and with Sue Galvin and, and hopefully they'll have their plans in place when they come before us on the twenty-second. So that's, so we can, we can move that forward. I, I think that's great.
Meredith, can I, can I just make one brief comment? First, thanks, Cheryl. Because this, I, I went through what was sent out and it just, I, I mean, you obviously have been around it for a while, but it's going to take an effort to get this thing back where it belongs. And but the other, the other thought I have, just in terms of timing, I think it's October twelfth is the deadline for articles for the twelve-five town meeting for December, for the December fifth town meeting. And one of the, one of the notes I read, the consultant, back when they were asking for a response to their analysis, had wanted a reply, I think by the third of December of twenty-one, to have it prepared for the town meeting, which would have been, I think, I think it would have been, I assume it was a May town meeting. I don't know. But I'm just trying to wrap my brain around the time that they need, once they're given what is given to them. I'm, I'm worried about the timeline.
Yeah.
Because they, that, that document, I think that document is referred to as legal review and analysis or whatever. And it, right in red on the cover of it, it said, needs to be returned by, and they have a date on there. And that to me is the indicator of how much time they need. It seems to me like they were looking for months to take what they're given to prepare it for something that could be used at town meeting.
Right. Any further comment on this? It's, this is, it's important. It really is. And we've got one shot.
Yeah, I mean, if I may, it seems to me for the rest of the board members, just a little bit of background, the, the planning board authorized use of planning board funds to have this codification done. And the that it was sent, included in a scope of work to the bylaw review committee. I don't have exact recollection of how it ended up there. But at this point, it's the, the, what the codification was to do was to take a, a document that was two thousand nine was the last time it was certified by a prior clerk. The current clerk doesn't feel as if she can certify it because she was, she can't attest to how it was done. She wasn't here for it and she doesn't have the, apparently doesn't have the confidence or records to feel as if she can certify. So that, that's our starting point is the two thousand nine document. But as we all know, it's been amended many times since then. But so if somebody now goes and wants to receive an official copy of the zoning bylaw, they get from the clerk, the two thousand nine version. And then all of the amendments have been made since then, but they're actually not incorporated into the document itself. So you know how difficult that can be to try and track what, what it is that it's, that they're really, what the code really says. So the idea was that they were going to take that written document and make it electronic. And they were going to incorporate the amendments up until the time that they were doing the work, which was twenty nineteen. And they did do that. They produced a document. But that document also has a few things where they renumbered some of the sections and a few other, what are called clerical things like that. That was given to the bylaw review committee. And along with a checklist, sort of an audit, if you will, similar to the document that we have in our folder, it's for twenty twenty-one. They had one for twenty nineteen and that was not delivered back to general code at that time either. Rather, Alex Whiteside on behalf of the bylaw review committee, he printed out that their draft document and made edits to it in the, in the, you know, the margins and turned it into the planning department. And the planning department typed in those changes and sent them to general code. That happened several times. But there's not a, a document that shows what all those edits are. So there's no baseline and there's no red line to really So there's no baseline and there's no red line to really con, to confirm it. So what we really need, according to town council, is in order for, for this to be something that town meeting can approve, absolutely every edit has to be indicated. So it has to show up as a red line. And we don't have a baseline document to work from. So it either has, has to be recreated or General Code has to provide it. And so what, my understanding from the meeting last night was Peter Mullen is going to reach out to Sue Galvin and, and request a meeting with General Code to see if they can provide it. And then if they can provide it, then we can, since it would be a planning board-sponsored article to town meeting, we would review that and say that this is what, this is actually the codification, which is taking everything that's already been approved and putting it in this new electronic format and asking that to be the baseline moving forward. Once we have that, any edits that Alex Whiteside suggested or anyone else, General Code has made a few suggestions of their own, any of those would come later as amendments to that baseline. So that's what we're trying to get to is, there doesn't seem to be any reason to take a risk of having somebody else make a mistake translating a, a written document into an electronic document who's already paid a consultant to do it. That's, that was my view, Meredith agreed with that last night, the committee seemed to be interested in seeing if that could be done through General Code. So I think Meredith should get an update from Peter as soon as he has those conversations. And so it may not be as difficult as, as it sounds, you know, in some ways initially. But that's the hope, that it can be a simple, a simple baseline to start with and then amendments later.
So Cheryl, that, that might mean that we, we end up with two steps. At one point, we, we may have thought of it being as one step, now we go two steps, but we get something done. We, and we get it, get back to that baseline, I, I, you know, based on what I know of it, and I don't know a lot about it, but I would totally support that. But I'll, I'll let Peter, you know, do what you've described and I look forward to talking about that. We need to get our town back in a position where Joe can do his job, you know, and, and be able to hand a document out as needed.
Yeah, and it's something searchable, you know, I mean, I work with, you know, in my day job and, you know, those towns that have a searchable zoning code, it's so much easier to, to work with. And I would just, well, I want to add, want to add one more thing is if we could get the baseline done in the October town meeting, or December rather, December town meeting, and then if we could say, well, there's edits that we can try for the May town meeting. And I think that would be an ideal two-step process, so I really would like to push for the December, for at least the baseline.
I'll be, I'll be a supporter of that, so we'll.
Yeah. Yeah, I think you can maybe make that our definite goal, so Maggie, you had your hand up?
Yeah, and I was just wondering, so are all these edits going to be in line with state statute? Cause I know I'd asked this question last time and Tim wasn't really sure of the answer, so I don't know if he's received an answer. So I do kind of feel like it should, if we're going through all this effort, we have to make sure that it reflects state statute.
So Maggie, one thing I identified too is that General Code did bring up that kind of question, you know, consistency with state statute. And the idea, I think, is that would be handled in the second step. So that we would get, at least get the initial codification done, which doesn't change anything, it just gets, you know, it might change the numbering system or something like that, but really not other changes. There are a few other things other than, I think it's the consistency with the definition of far minus one, I think that you're probably thinking of. But there's a few other things too that I read, where a law was repealed in 1969 that our zoning code still refers to. So, yeah, that's long overdue for getting fixed, there's things like that.
Yeah, Maggie, I, I, you know, some of what I read through, they, they, they're directing us, they, they're suggesting to do exactly what you just said and, and what I, one of the things I remember is the Milton has its, in its zoning bylaws, some definition of, of, you know, zoning pertaining to pools. They simply said, just adopt the state pool guideline, you know, so that anyhow, I, I'm gonna shut up to stay consistent with what I said at this town meeting.
Good, so this will be a priority and on our next agenda, so. Rich, I don't know if you had anything that you needed to add, if that's sufficient. Okay, good, yeah, but that does explain sort of where we are to the public, so the citizens understand that this is something we, we are working on and, and will be forthcoming, hopefully, soon. Okay, so, so again, you know, highlight back to the goals and objectives of the planning board. I don't know if there was anything else, Cheryl, that's great, if you want to work on the codification, pushing that, moving that forward. We'd also talked about, do we want to keep on the cut and fill? Doing possibly a cut and fill article at some point?
Sure, if, if Sean or Maggie or Rich, or you want to join me, and if Tim did look at, I think, examples from three other communities that we could look at for reference. And there's a document that I had, I had shared with Tim that I, was from another community, it was like a development guide, which really kind of put forth what the board was looking for, like in smart growth kind of things. And it would be more like low-end development design, on-site design, you know, things where you're doing as little cut and fill as, as you can, preserving trees, things of that nature that we've all talked about. And I think it was in Franklin. So maybe the first step is to have Tim share those documents with the whole board. And then everybody, this was a little subgroup that Denny and I were working on previously. So if those documents could be shared with the whole board, then, then each of you can see who else might be interested in working on it.
Yeah, I, I'd be happy to join you on that, Cheryl, sure.
That'd be great, great, Sean. Okay, great, so that will be, and anything anybody else thought of after we sort of went through that list? I don't know if there was other items that, again, I think we also said we don't want to try to take on too much, we'd rather be effective and really get things accomplished rather than.
I'm sorry, Meredith.
Yeah, no, I just, yeah, having a prior, prioritized list.
Yeah, I don't know in terms of a timing of when we could do this, but I do feel as if we owe it to the town meeting to come back and to work on something where we take the ideas that were in the temporary apartment bylaw revision and the ADU proposal and really hammer out what we, as a board, you know, would support putting forward. So town meeting asked us to do it and, and I think the last time I, I spoke a bit about this, but I would like for us to have that as a to-do.
Yeah. And I think it was also mentioned, we will put that on, on a, definitely an, an agenda soon to come, because we also, someone, and I can't remember if, if it was Rich, we were gonna look at what other towns are doing also, just sort of trying to see what other towns that are similar to Milton have done. But also, any studies that they've done, if there's any study that we should maybe be looking at as well. But, but definitely taking a proactive position on this.
I can tell you that MAPC, the Metropolitan Planning Council, has done studies on this. ARC, Mass, or ARC overall has done studies on it, and so has the state, it's in their, Smart Growth Toolkit, I believe. All of those were shared with the prior board, links to those, so if you're interested, I can, I can share those.
And I think those are really more probably statewide, you know, studies that have been done regionally. I'm thinking, you know, if we were gonna do something, I was thinking more specific to, to Milton residents and the needs of the town.
I think there's also been a study that incorporates towns in our region. You know, I don't think we want to compare necessarily to Western Mass, I think it's different. But I think there was, there were a couple of studies that were more, and MAPC was definitely, because MAPC's geographic territory is eastern. It, it doesn't cut, there's a different organization for central and western Mass to that. And then the other thing is there were, I think, that maybe they have an update, but some towns did have zoning amendments in, in their warrants, you know, last spring. And who knows, some may have them in their warrants this fall. And so I think.
Yeah, I'll go over with Tim, but we might be able to put that on the agenda for the 22nd and add, you know, sort of our approach, you know, and how we would like to.
So if, just one more suggestion on that, is, you know, Tim belongs to this planners' listserv and sometimes what they do is they, they put out in that group email, has any, has any of you been working on XYZ? And they send back comments about what they've been doing. So he could send out what has, what have, you know, communities in the Boston region, eastern region been doing on ADUs and he can get some information that way.
That's great, I'll, that's definitely, I'll ask him about that. Okay, good. So moving along, unfortunately, is Josh still here with us? Yes, he is.
I'm here.
Yeah, so we had, we had taken a vote on the East, the RFP for the East Milton overlay zoning. And we sort of left it, and unfortunately between, I think, Tim getting sick and vacation and getting sick and, you know, you, I know, were away for a few days. Were you, you were gonna meet with Rich, and Rich, I don't know if you've had a chance to talk to the staff about ironing out that first sentence?
Yes, Rich can speak more to it, but he and I met earlier in the week and just yesterday, Rich sent along final language to that first sentence. So I can, I can share my screen.
I was gonna say, if you could do that, that would be great, just thanks for working on that, Rich.
Yeah, so the, the updated sentence, and Rich can expand on, on perhaps like the, the exact reasoning and, and the, the journey it took. But we, we had a long conversation and this, this first sentence is what felt most appropriate and respectful and reflective of the realities of East Milton Square. It reads, "East Milton Square is comprised of the largest commercial district in town, the focus of the zoning initiative, and historic residential areas." All, all the other changes that we had discussed were, were accepted and, and are finalized. But Rich, if, if you want to speak more to that sentence, please.
Not much more to say, I think you did it, I like with, yeah, I think it, it at least meets my expectations based on what comments I made last time around, but, yeah.
Anyone else?
It looks good to me. I, I think it's, one of the things that I mentioned was making sure it was clear that the focus of the zoning was the business district and not the whole neighborhood, so I, I think it does do that.
Exactly, I agree, and I think that was a concern of Rich's, that it was.
I, I'm also, I'm also good with it, you know, we asked Rich to take care of it, he's done that, I'm, I'm, I'm fine with it.
And we've already got it, so we just, I just wanted to, to see, so Josh, there's something that you can, you'll send out?
Yes, Tim and I have got that final language. We've prepared the sort of package with the, with the attachments that are discussed and we'll be sending that out early next week.
Terrific. Good. Anything else on that? That's, we're good. Thank you, Josh, appreciate that, and thank you, Rich, also. So the last thing, we really, and I just want to thank everyone who's been looking at these 40B projects. I think there were, you know, we, we had Amor Road, Brush Hill Road and Randolph Avenue pretty much all coming in all at once. So it was sort of a, you know, I think those timelines snuck up on us. And, you know, the one thing I would, would really want to make sure, it's, it's very difficult when you're watching the ZBA meetings to know how close they are to really being finalized, because sometimes things seem very incomplete, some of the plans, it seems like they need more work. And then if you miss a meeting, you might not know, we, we might not know that the deadlines are coming up. And Josh, I, you know, I just would, and will convey to Tim that as much time that we can get to be able to look at those in advance and get an idea of, are we looking at the final project? Or, you know, are things still changing before we make comments? We want to make sure we're commenting on the, an actual project. That we just have time, that the planning board can get comments in, I think is really important, especially when they come in, you know, within three weeks of each other. That was, it was just a, you know, I felt like it was a bit of a scramble and I'd like to be more, you know, we could be a little ahead of that. Josh, if that's, if we can discuss that with Tim.
Absolutely, as, as you know, you know, he's, he's out now at a 40B hearing, so we do that juggling. But thanks for the cracks, I appreciate your understanding.
Just on that timeline, what looks like it's gonna be the next, what will be the, the next comment period that we're, comments that we'll need to submit on which project? Do you know, Josh? I'd like to put you on the spot.
I, I, that is being discussed at tonight's ZBA meeting, so I, I can't speak with, with accuracy, but.
Okay, no, not a problem, I just didn't know if you had an indication. Cheryl?
Yes, I just, for people who may be watching and trying to understand a little bit of our role in the comment on the 40Bs, is we don't have an official role in the 40B review process, but we've, the ZBA has welcomed our comments. And I have found that when, when all of the 40Bs that are, except for the, you know, Randolph Ave, the first Randolph Ave that's like seven or eight years old, all of the other ones that came in relatively close to one another, the planning board did write detailed letters that went to DHCD, I think is the agency, right? They, or was it, I'm forgetting which agency actually grants the letter, the certification letter. And so what I, what I found is that, you know, we can regurgitate our letters because the reality is the plans don't change much from what they originally submitted to what they get approved in the end. I think there's a resistance on the applicants to make many changes at all. So, you know, we did have letters for all of these, I think we can look at those as a, as a baseline. And I know for the large ones, East Milton Square, Canton Ave and Blue Hill Ave, you know, I drafted some of those original letters, Kathleen did a second letter, and we, we really just worked off of the first one. So I, that might help, Meredith, you know, in, in terms of not, not reinventing the wheel, because, you know, something.
That's where a lot of it.
Very incremental minor changes.
Right. Yeah.
And for the public, I, I just want to express, you know, my frustration that in this whole 40B process, that the design guidelines that DHCD has produced aren't enforced in any way at the state level. And so while we cite them and peer review architects cites them, there's really nothing that's compelling the applicant to have to change them or, or to follow them. And I would really love to see that changed at the state level. If there's any way to provide feedback as a town, just in, in, in any way, I would love to provide it. Because I, I have really found it very disappointing, this 40B process. I've invested a lot of my time in reviewing plans and writing letters and analyzing plans and, you know, raising a lot of issues and, and it just, they just go out the window. They just don't even get any consideration and it's, it's really a frustrating process.
Sean, you had your hand up next.
I just, this probably goes to Josh and I know it's really, really difficult to manage the applicant's design team, but it's, it's, you know, our. But it's it's, you know, our it it would be really helpful if we could be steered towards. The right documents to review. Though the files for the projects seem to be a conglomeration of everything that they've submitted to the town. And, you know. I don't think the applicants make it very easy for the town to, you know, to to conduct a proper review. But that's just a comment from me as a member of the, but I I do not find it easy to. To to find the right doc, most current documents, the most current design. To review.
Thank you. Rich?
Yeah. Can you hear me?
Yes, yes.
No, yeah, I just wanted to weigh in. I, as Cheryl pointed earlier about the work that went in over the past. To 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 send our thoughts from the boards. And I said a little bit of this last time we talked about this, I'll just say it a little differently. I mean, I haven't weighed in yet again, because, you know, we we did send all those. For all intents and purposes, it don't mean this nasty to the state, but they were, you know, they were put aside. They're not looked at. I don't know if they're looked at or anything, but nothing is was was incorporated, obviously. And so what I was asking in one of our last meetings was, you know, some of the things that we were talking about was very. Detailed that we're real, like we were doing a site approval, we would talk be talking about this detail. I'm not sure. We probably went into, and Cheryl, I know you spent a ton of time putting detailed notes together on those. Maybe we went that far, but I'm sure that now that we can see the actual, you know, plans and everything has gone this far. I'm sure our notes or our comments could even be more detailed. My thing, though, is are is this ZBA going to read them? Are they interested? And what I was hoping. And I don't think I was very specific to say, hey, Tim, go ask. But what I was hoping to get after that meeting was, let's ask them, like, why can't we ask the ZBA if they're interested in some of those finer points? Because that's where this board really shines, right? Is to be able to weigh in and say, you know, here are some of the things that you need to think about for safety and all these other things that are that are just gonna be missed. I know they don't need to, but the ZBA asks us for our opinions when at other times when they don't need to. And so I'm not sure why we can't in this instance. And then it's we're putting comments together that we know is gonna be read. I commend you folks who are wanting to redo redo comments. I haven't given anymore because nobody's saying that they're reading them, so I don't know the point. I'm just trying to just say, you know, I'm just being like, I don't know what, I mean, if they're gonna read them, I say we we invest more time in it.
No, I believe the ZBA does read them. I think what they end up doing is a balancing of conditions of really what can, you know, what can stand up? You know?
You're right, but I would say last time around, and I don't want to speak for anybody else that was on the board. I feel like it was very much, we don't think you should do this project and here are all the reasons. But now, correct me if I'm wrong, like Cheryl, you were noting some things that were very detailed in, you know, the use of different things. That's way different than what we said, I think, a little different than we said last time. And I think they should really want to ask, like, listen to us on, but I think it would take a planning director to ask them. And say, okay, hey, yeah, we would like to weigh in on these things, you know, so that they get incorporated. We're not trying to derail your project, but we think there's some things in here that you need to read.
To make it better.
Yeah.
Maggie?
Yeah, so to that point, I I did watch the last. Earring on sixteen Amor Road. And I know you mentioned that, you know, there was Tim was out sick. And then Josh wasn't there, but I sort of felt like our board was a bit reprimanded by. The ZBA chair at that meeting. And Mr. Leonard specifically said to Tim, what does the planning board have to say? And then. Tim mentioned a couple of things that I had mentioned about tree size. And then Mr. Leonard said, well, how come they're weighing in so late? Where have they been? And. Like, I watched it and I felt uncomfortable speaking up because. I didn't really know, and I know I had asked this before, but I know the things that I had looked at. You know, trees are important to me. And and I do feel like that particular board. With one particular zoning board member, Mr. Conley, who I don't know, he picked up on quite a few things. That was really quite interesting that I feel like no other zoning board. Person has picked up before. So to your point, maybe the you they're smaller and they can be a little bit more creative or look at the details. So I I kind of felt a little bit. Let down. And and I, you know, I'm sorry that Tim's not here, but I kind of felt a little bit let down that we did spend this time. And our thoughts were not conveyed. So I, to your point, I do think that there needs to be a process. I do think we need to know more. And they closed that meeting and I couldn't, to Sean's point, I couldn't find anything. I followed that project pretty closely. It was really difficult to find. And they make small little notations on these big plans, but maybe they just need to like do a little narrative. You know, just a little memo so we're not going back through and in finding out all these little changes of plans. And part of the problem was the applicant met with the neighbor and that's great and highly encouraged. But then that discussion wasn't presented on any paper or reflected on any memo. And then they closed the meeting without updating the. Any any plan for us to then comment on. So I do feel a little bit badly. And I hope the neighbors don't think that we let them down. Because I just wouldn't want people to think that we've talked about it and. And and I just unfortunately think the ZBA didn't quite hear what what our thought.
And I did. I did speak with Tim on that and we did spend a lot of time discussing Amor Road and had some really good specific comments. And I have been assured by Tim that he was gonna get those comments to the ZBA and make sure that they had everything that we had discussed. And and so I'm I'm trusting that he's gonna do that, so. Cheryl, you had next?
Yeah, one of the things I would say is. What I've noticed is that each of these hearings, it depends on the particular ZBA that is has been seated for the hearing on how they run the hearing. And they're tough. They've been run totally different. And whether they actually seek out and plan out what their meetings were going to be. I found the Blue Hill Ave one to be really easy to follow, highly organized. I found the Canton Ave one not nearly so. And so knowing, you know, when the town, like I think Tim or Judy Barrett was. They were the ones who were supposed to say, this is when certain towns input is going to be heard. And let those bodies know, the fire chief, the DPW, the police department, what who engineering department. And so, you know. These, it's hard for us to know what their schedules are and when they're going to be talking about things that were where our input is desired. So when they're going to have the architectural presentation and the architectural peer review, they should invite us to those meetings. That's the appropriate time for us to be there or the meeting following that where they're gonna get comment on it. They don't have time to hear our comments at that time. We can't just be expected to attend every meeting and be available to provide comment. There's no way. I mean, so that's why I say I've been frustrated by all this because I've been, you know, trying to do this for a few years and, you know. And it's it has been frustrating, really.
And we just want to do the best for, yeah, the butters and the neighbors. It's. Rich, your hand up? Yeah.
Yeah, no, Maggie, I really appreciate you you going to that and conveying that. Is it something we we would not have heard? And, you know, not to to repeat Cheryl, but you beat me to the punch and I'm gonna repeat a couple of things. It's it's, I mean, I'll just, I hopefully somebody watches this. It's not our job to watch the hundreds of meetings for ten different forty Bs. Going on with the ZBA, just like they don't watch all of our meetings. I mean, that, can you imagine if we had to, like, just listening to all of you trying to read through those documents? I don't even think it, I mean, they need to, like Cheryl just said, at the appropriate time, they should be looking at the different boards and saying. Hey, Tim, would have your board weigh in here or this board weigh in here? We can't guess. I mean, we said, there was a lot of people spent a lot of time putting together thoughts and considerations. We sent those straight to the state and actually I think collided with the, I mean, I know the select board was putting things together. We've all had opinions throughout this process, but what is there nine or ten of these things in front of us? And there's how many different ZBA groups that are running these? I take, I I I take a lot of pause with the comment that was made there because it's it's really not fair to the town nor our board. And so I'm really hoping that, you know. Yeah, I'm really hoping that these folks like do the right thing and ask us appropriately to weigh in when it is. And we are pretty good about weighing in and weighing in timely when asked, I feel like. But and I actually will say this, I feel bad for Tim because I have the same response you had, Maggie. I think you're a hundred percent right with the way you just presented that. And I, but I also think it's, you know, Tim's put him in a bad position with that board because of the way they they said that, you know. It's upsetting.
Yeah, and I do feel like, you know, the Amor Road is closed, but the. Brush Hill, Brush Hill Road, I think, is the next one that's gonna be closing. And I think that building in particular, you know, Brush Hill Road is just one of my, it's like my favorite street in the whole town. And in and I feel like, to Cheryl's point, like, what they've proposed just does not fit in. And I'm not against, like, modern looking houses, you know, I like mid-century modern houses. But on Brush Hill Road in particular, at that site, on either side, they are very, very pretty, pretty, pretty houses. And I feel like the applicant has done nothing to change the design. And I, why can't they just make it look like, you know, an old mansion, like the greatest state big house? And then carve it up to, you know, on the inside, but you can't tell from the outside. And I don't know if they're listening to that or not. I haven't seen any change in the design. But I just feel like, not that we owe it to the neighbors, but we actually just owe it to the street and the the history of the street. Not to put what they're putting there. It's like really bad.
Well, Meredith, I just raised my hand, but I. This, I think every board in town is overwhelmed by what's happening. And the ZBAs are obviously been parceled into smaller groups to try to be able to manage this thing. So everybody's overwhelmed. Nobody's happy about it. The process is broken, in my opinion, because there's no accountability, as Cheryl said. The developer is more or less getting a green light to do whatever they want. And good decision making in terms of design and architecture is sacrificed in the interest of the lowest possible cost project that the developer can build. So, you know, until the state really. Reconsiders and creates some guidelines for the developers, we're gonna continue to be frustrated. We're gonna continue to be overwhelmed and so will the ZBA.
Who can we call? Can we call someone in there and be like, wake up? Like, what are they thinking?
Well, there's gonna be a new governor and they'll presumably be new department or, I don't know. Not department, but secretaries, right? So there'll be a new DHCD. And, you know, the. Mandate that I understood was that. You know, affordable housing is not being, multifamily housing is not being zoned for. Affordable housing and housing in general is a real challenge for the. Economy of Massachusetts and the governor, you know, it came down from the governor's office. So it's a big, that's at the highest level of the state government. But on the local side, I think, you know, that's why I, and I know it's it's been a challenge to have people understand. Why this is tied together, but if we are in better control of our circumstances, if we can plan for our own affordable housing. And so that we meet our ten percent without forty Bs. And it's hard because we have to figure out where to do it. But at least we can get the thing, the kinds of projects that we have some say in. And we can get the kinds of developments and developers who are interested in what we have to say.
Yeah, so how do we do that? So if, you know. I'm not in real estate, but I follow what's for sale in town. And there is a couple houses in town that are reasonably priced. Like, can't we buy them and then make them affordable, make them into affordable units? Like, what's that?
Part of, I think, the Community Preservation Act. I think that's gonna really help with funding some projects and in getting. Allowing us to be more proactive than we have.
So another thing, Maggie, is is town owned property and really having this select board. Take a look at when at whether any town owned property could be used for affordable housing a hundred percent. So they could issue an RFP to a nonprofit developer. And then instead of getting twenty percent of your units affordable, you're getting a hundred percent of them affordable. Or, you know, like where Winter Valley, we rezoned. You know, or we amended their zoning so they could add affordable units. Those are a hundred percent affordable. So there it's a zoning initiative. And to build multifamily, we need, the zoning needs to be a place to do it, too. So there is a zoning tie in to doing it. It's hard to do individual, like, to meet the numbers we need. It's pretty hard to do it on a one by one single family. You know, if if Milton had made different land choice decisions, I think, years ago, when there was larger tracts available. It might have been easier to do like starter homes, like single family homes, you know, and small lots, but we don't, there's not a lot of land left. To try and get the kind of numbers we need with that particular housing type. But I think it could be, I think it could be something where you're looking at a parcel that, as you said before, it can look like. A large old estate, but meanwhile, it could have a number of affordable units in it. It might be ten units, you know, it might be twelve. And those scattered about would fit in just fine. That's multifamily. So, you know, multifamily doesn't necessarily mean, you know, the things that we've seen proposed by these forty B developers for Canton Ave and Blue Hill Ave and East Milton Square. Because that's what people envision envision when they think multifamily, but multifamily, you know, can have all different scales. And I think that's the way it's gonna have to be done, just because of the amount of land that's available.
And Sean, you had your hand up again.
Oh, I I apologize. I.
Well, this was a good conversation. I'm sorry Tim's not here to be part of it, but hopefully he'll watch. Later. So is there anything else that anybody wanted to discuss? Because it's actually almost eight thirty. So Sean, we're doing well tonight.
Doing excellent.
Yes, anything else? Josh, did you have anything else that you wanted to add this evening?
I I don't have much on my end, just to say also, the Affordable Housing Trust to Maggie's last point. Is is also in in the business of buying down units and and making more affordable. They don't have funds to do anything on the scale of buying a single family house. And even with CPC funding, wouldn't wouldn't be able to do that, but they're trying their best and and doing what they can with the money they have.
Yeah, but one of these houses is like four hundred ninety-nine thousand dollars. Like, it's pretty reasonable. Like, so how quickly, if there are funding, how quick can the town turn around? And purchase something? You know, because you have to be pretty competitive to do that. And, you know, you know, Meredith, you know, houses, I mean, maybe in this market, it's a little bit different. But I feel like we have to put our staff, you know, in a position where they see something come up. And they can make the determination if it's worth it to invest.
But Maggie, say, let's say it's if you're purchasing a single family for over four hundred thousand. I think the purchase price for an eighty percent AMI affordable unit has got to be two hundred fifty thousand dollars or thereabouts, maybe two hundred seventy-five thousand now. I think the purchase price for an 80% AMI affordable unit has got to be at $250,000 or thereabouts, maybe $275,000 now. And so that's the issue, the big delta between what the market is and what the affordable units can be, is a, is a real big delta. One thing that some communities have also is, you know, Community Development Corporation, basically a nonprofit that fundraises, you know, to, uh, is mission-driven, if you will. And, you know, uh, some, um, like I read there was an architect, I think it was in Newton, who donated his house to one of those, uh, rather than leaving it to his children because he felt as if he had provided it all for his children. And then he wanted to help solve the affordable housing problem in Newton, I think it was. Um, and so then that entity, that, uh, nonprofit would, you know, either sell it and take those proceeds and do more with it, kind of leverage that asset, or they could, you know, do the units there. But, and I also saw recently that another, um, community's housing authority was, uh, just given a gift of over $350,000. And so, you know, is there philanthropy, you know, in Milton that could help? Does, does anyone have land? You know, I mean, these are all like, there's not gonna be one big solution, uh, at, at least in, in my view. I haven't looked at this for a bit. I think it's a multi-pronged solution. Um, but it has to be something that people believe needs to be worked on, really.
Yeah, so I do think, like, what causes, you know, angst, you know, what causes me angst is a resident in town. Town is kind of what you said, is, oh, let's look at town-owned property. So the town-owned properties are like open space. And so here we are in town trying to put together this climate action, um, proposal. And then there's a proposal to, well, let's take our green corners and our green spaces to then build higher density. And let's throw a few trees in there, uh, when we just sort of destroy our little echo, you know, sys- system. But I do feel like there's more of an appetite from our residents. Like, if there's an existing house there, and maybe it is just one level, it's, it's, you know, a ranch, and it's just in a neighborhood, the town buys it, you know, and then they put in another apartment, make it a two-family, but they don't make it look like a two-family, or it's a nice two-family. I feel like the residents of the town would be more accepting of these types of initiatives, you know, pockets here, there, and everywhere, and maybe every, every precinct has to come up with a solution. You know, um, there are 10 precincts in town and we need to spread it throughout the town. And then it's up to each precinct to come up with like five units every year.
Maggie, I think something, uh, this, this, this is a, you know, obviously there needs to be some, um, uh, I guess, um, creative solu-, and, and this is, this is within that category, creative solutions. But I think the town would need a development partner. And, you know, as you encounter a land parcel, you know, be in a position that if you were to buy it, you have a development partner that would develop it and create, because we're, we're not builders, we're, we're not. The town is not gonna build, um, you know, residential housing of any type. But if we're, if we, if we're positioned with a development partner that would build it, um, you know, then we'd be in a better position to execute on it.
I, I like, I like the thoughts, Maggie, just to jump in, sorry, I, I, you know, there's been a lot of these thoughts over the years and nothing seems to go. And what you just said, that's a good creative thought, like, people should, should look into that, you know what I mean? Like, it's, it's very tough. Tough conversation, I think is where you're going, it's tough conversation when it's 100 units and nobody wants it in their backyard. Or when it's 10 units and the column buys, everybody wants, everybody wants it. But, you know, when you start small, I think there's not one solution, it's many little solutions. Um, I think these are all great and we gotta keep talking about them.
Maggie, what's that's preaddressed?
Well, they're, they're, uh, it's on Out of On Road, which I think already is in our, has two families in the neighborhood. And then there's another one on Curtis Road, which is off of, um, the Parkway right at the end. And that has two families in it. So to Cheryl's point, you have to make sure, you know, the zoning will allow it.
Right.
It could allow it.
Uh, I, I'm happy to pass these thoughts along to the Affordable Housing Trust at their meeting next Tuesday. Thank you, appreciate the feedback.
It's one thing I would caution on, um, on the two families in the, the zoning allows two families only when you have two families next to the parcel. And some, some precincts have no two families in them. So if our interest is in spreading units out, I think we have to be careful not, the two families are, are, I already looked at this, they already had some mapping done, I'd be happy to send you the, the maps that GIS did, formerly when I was looking at this. But the, um, a lot of the two families are in our densest neighborhoods already. You know, so we wanna make sure that all precincts are taking some so that it's not concentrated in those same precincts. You know, that, that equitable kind of solution.
Yeah, no, I, I was just thinking from a cost perspective.
Yeah, understood. So this is where, yeah, this is where, you know, one of those things where when we were, this, the planning board was looking at condo conversion and whether there would be some places where large, like, let's just say the Blue Hill Ave. 40B, that's 11,000 square foot house. You know, would it have been possible, sort of a 40B, to have that be multifamily, right? Because it's a big house with a big parcel. But the other thing was you could add units to that parcel in a better way than they did. It's just it wouldn't be nearly as many as units. And so that was the idea behind condo conversion. But it, it got sort of lost in the panic or, you know, concerns that people had about what it would destroy places. But the idea is it's a better way to get, you know, units, um, rather than 40Bs. And so I, I think these conversations are still worth having in a, in a reasoned way. Not a panic way, not a scare tactic way, but really it's sort of an understanding way of how these tools might work. So it might be one thing in a dense district that already has two families, and something else in a precinct or a district that has larger lots, right? So like, you know, uh, because it, it wouldn't make the sa-, it wouldn't make the same sense. Some of those are pretty high-density districts, if you look at it on a per-acre basis, you know, compared to some other parts of town, so. Um, and there are some community, other communities, I think it's worth seeing what they've done with, um, with condo conversion. The other problem with affordability is you need a sort of magnitude of scale in order, if it's not subsidized by Community Preservation Committee or nonprofit or town fund or state funds, is what's making up for the cost differential? And usually it's the number of market rate units, right? So the more market rate units get to subsidize, the, the affordable units. And that's just these 40Bs, it's, that's the recipe for high density, which I don't think anybody likes.
Yeah. Cheryl, quick question for you, Cheryl, and I wonder, I think we've done this before, has talked about like the economics, like, back-of-the-envelope-type economics in, in, in past meetings. Because the problem, I think, is, is, I like the, like, let's buy this house, let's turn it into it. But the problem is if you pay $4,000 for a house and you charge rent of $1,000, it's gonna take you like hundreds of years to, to make your money back. And so the reality is, there's unfortunate, like, there's, there's the economic, like, how many units does it need to be? And what's the cost need to be so we can do one of these things? Is it two units in that $4,000? Is it three units? Like, what is it? And how do you do it? Because I do agree, like, we don't pull the trigger fast enough in this town. There could be, I think there's been other properties that went really cheap and we probably could have grabbed. I think some of those are now 40Bs, um, so in hindsight, it would've been nice.
Yeah, and then we get 100%, so, so, like Sean's ideas, if you team up with a development partner, um, you know, the, especially, the other question was, sorry, I lost my train of thought, is if a house becomes or goes on the foreclosure list, does the town get notified first? Like, does it go to?
Bank foreclosure or tax?
Uh, to the bank, a bank foreclosure. Because I know it's listed in the back of the paper, the newspaper, because it shows, um. So I feel like we just need to, the town needs to be in a position to sort of, you know, unfortunately, take advantage of an unfortunate situation. And then, um, and then if we buy it and we rent it out, then both, one unit or two units is forever on our housing list, right? If it's a rental unit, if I understand it correctly. And, and, and if we keep it, I know it could be a loss for the town. But actually putting in this big 40B with 100 units and only getting 10, that's a loss for the town. A greater loss for the town, because we have now all these new kids coming to the school and all those other units. So yes, maybe one individual house here, there, and there, it might be a loss, but it's actually less of a loss than doing a bigger development. If that makes sense.
These are all challenges, it is, you know, I, I think, but I think these conversations are important and the dialogue, you know, between the Affordable Housing Trust, between, you know, when we do have CPC funds coming and, you know, just, um, just being in a position where we can be proactive, so, that's great. And that was one of the things that I did discuss with Arthur when we met. How do we, how do we work with our accountant, our, you know, town administrator to, to try to figure out a way to do this, so?
I wonder if there's a zoning mechanism that can be floating, so it's an overlay that floats, um, that is tied to affordability? So that you don't have to go about rezoning necessarily. Because even what you're suggesting, Maggie, if there's not a two-family there, there's no legal mechanism to make it a two-family. You know, just because the town owns it, um, I don't know that that means that they're exempt from the zoning that says it's a single-family district. It would be a good question, Josh, for you to, uh, if you could look into that. Because, and then if you could also look into whether there's any kind of a floating, um, zoning such that, you know, a, a single family could be converted to a two-family if there's some affordability component, which would have to be defined, but, I mean, just as a concept, is that something that's doable? I don't really know.
And again, I'm not proposing that everybody in town do this, um, you know, but I feel like from a town's perspective, we need to start solving our problems ourself and not relying on the developers to throw us a few units here and there. You know, we need to solve it.
Now, the one thing I would say, Maggie, not doing it all over town is, you know, like, the 40B neighbor, the neighbors to 40Bs would rather see those units spread out over larger chunks of the town than right next door to them. And it's just, uh, happens to be, um, a fate that they get that developer next to them because the town hasn't taken the right actions. And it's not fair to those neighbors. And so everybody in every part of town should have to have some to, for it to be equitable. This is something I've been saying for several years, since these 40Bs have been coming in. I'm trying to find some zoning and planning issues to help do it. Um, and people are resistant to it, but you, you have to have these difficult conversations unless you just don't care that your neighbors are getting 40Bs. You know, if, that's the reality.
And Rich?
Yeah, I just wanted to throw in, I don't wanna, I won't.
Wrap it up, yeah.
I'm sure I can keep tacking on, I love, I love the comments. Um, I just wanted to, because I heard, I think I heard CP, A funding a few times in that whole conversation. And for what it's worth, for first round of funding, um, the applications, at least the project eligibility, eligibility applications, I do this October 1st, so for folks that are watching or people on the board, if you have ideas, the applications are online on the CPC, CPC, um, website for those project eligibility forms. They're like one page and they're super easy to fill out. You fill it out, it's due October 1st. There's a lot of money sitting there.
Great, Rich. Do we have an update on sort of what, where we are roughly on numbers, on what expectation on?
I thought it was a little over one, 1.1 million or somewhere around there, um, if.
You could buy that house.
There you go. But, um, so yesterday, last night, Rob did, did a really good job presenting kind of like where we're at and kind of walked through all the, this is how, um, like, what qualifies. I'm gonna forward you, I'll forward Tim, if people don't see, I'll forward that presentation. Um, but everything's online except for the presentation, but I'll send it to you guys. It's just, it's just pulling things together in one spot, but it's a pretty good read. Um, I mean, I'll be honest, I, I went home from that, y- you know, with a renewed calling neighbors going, hey, you guys need to fill out this? Like, fill things out, send them in. And my understanding is, Rob said, we've only got two applications so far. And so people need to fill them out.
Perfect. Okay. Is there?
I didn't mean that.
Oh, sorry? Okay, I didn't know if you were putting your hand up again. Okay, if there is nothing else, um, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make the motion.
A second?
Okay.
Okay, roll call. Um, Sean?
Yes.
Cheryl?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Maggie?
Yeah.
And I think this was a very good discussion tonight, so thank you all.
Agreed, yeah, nice meeting, everybody. Thanks very much.
Thank you.